May 19, 2014, City Council meeting to order and invite Boy Scout Liam Green of Troop 625 to come to the microphone and ask that everyone in the audience desiring to join the council and myself in the pledge allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening under special business is several proclamations. I would like to invite Bob Brock, representing the Issaquah Historical Society, forward. Here I have a proclamation that states, whereas each community has its own unique history that contributes to its present and is reflected in its future, and whereas the city of Issaquah believes that the city's history is a valued and vital component of its identity and vision, and whereas public recognition of local history helps to foster local pride, maintain community character, and build a deeper sense of appreciation for the place itself, now therefore I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 2014 to be Local History Month in the city of Issaquah and call upon its people of Issaquah to recognize and participate in this special observance and witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and seal of the city of Issaquah this 19th day of May 2014. Bob, thank you for being on the board of the Issaquah Historical Society and for being a part of preserving our local history.
Thank you, Fred.
Now, what you might not know is that Bob is a former director for Public Works Engineering, and he's here also to accept a proclamation, and I will read the proclamation that says, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as the planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel, whose staff is across Public Works Engineering and Public Works Operations Departments, is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore I, Fred Butler, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 18 through 24, May 2014, to be National Public Works Weeks. In the city of Issaquah, I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which Issaquah Public Works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the city of Issaquah this 19th day of May 2014. Fred Butler, Mayor. Bob, thank you for accepting this on behalf of our Public Works Engineering and Public Works Operations Staff who provide such a valuable service to our community.
Thank you, Fred. It was my privilege to serve under you and Ava as your Public Works Director and appreciate all the support that the council and the mayor's office gave during my time here and continue to do so.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item of business is audience comments. Citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have an opportunity to do so this evening. Some general guidelines for public participation. When recognized, please come to the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, your relationship to the city, resident, property owner, business owner, or whatever. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit them to the city clerk. Remember to address your comments to the full council and not to individual members. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. If I determine a speaker is out of order, I will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat, and if the speaker does not comply, I will ask them to leave the council chambers. Again, I'd like to reiterate that citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. Again, we take those comments seriously, and we thank the members of public for taking time to address us during our meetings. And with that, I would ask the clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have six people who've signed up. The first is Doug McDaniel, followed by Stan Keel.
See if you can hear me. Good evening, Mayor Butler and council members. My name is Doug McDaniel. I'm an Issaquah resident. My address is 19221 Southeast 44th Way, Issaquah. I'm a board member of the Eastside Legal Assistance Program, ELAP, and I'm here to share some comments about ELAP. And I have some of the facts here, and I want to read it, and I'm here with my executive director from ELAP, Stan Keel, and he'll have some comments after I do here. The first thing I wanted to do is just say we appreciate the support that the city of Issaquah has provided to ELAP to assist us in providing legal services to low-income residents of Issaquah and survivors of domestic violence. Some of the facts and statistics about our organization are that we have over 260 volunteer attorneys to help us provide these services. They volunteer their time to provide advice to legal clinics where clients receive 30 to 45 minutes of advice on legal issues they are facing and to provide additional brief services or direct representation. We also have three full-time domestic violence, or DV, staff attorneys who provide assistance to survivors of domestic violence whose health and safety is at grave risk. One of these domestic violence staff attorneys manages our expansion program, which Mr. Keel will describe in his comments. In 2013, we served 76 Issaquah residents and provided 98 appointments in legal clinics for Issaquah residents. Our DV staff attorney served two Issaquah residents who were survivors of domestic violence. Forty-eight Issaquah residents attended lectures or received referrals to other services. Now, in the first quarter of 2014, we've already served 31 Issaquah residents with 26 clinic appointments, one DV survivor served by our DV staff attorneys, and nine residents attended lectures or received referrals. What I'd like to do now is just kind of tell you a little bit about our organization through a client's story. Kind of change the names about the client here and just to give you an example of some of the services that we provide here. Samantha Jones came to ELAP, or Eastside Legal Assistance. Her economic situation was exceedingly stressful. Her bills and debts had reached a level that she could not pay them. A lawyer from a collection agency had just sent her a letter regarding a credit card, and Samantha did not know what to do. Samantha contacted ELAP and was scheduled for a 45-minute appointment with a bankruptcy attorney at the legal clinic. She met with a volunteer attorney who reviewed her debts with her as well as her current financial situation. The attorney was able to determine that she was judgment-proof and advised her of the facts. This helped to alleviate her stress in the situation. Sometimes this little bit of assistance is all that a person needs. Other times, issues are much more complex, and they need specific legal advice on how to interact with the civil legal justice system. Again, ELAP provides services that meet the basic needs of low-income residents of Issaquah and survivors of domestic violence by providing access to the justice system. Sometimes there's a justice gap that exists, is more pronounced than ever. A number of people in need of legal aid continues to far exceed the capacity. Today, the vast majority of low-income residents with compelling legal problems, problems that directly affect personal and family safety and security, cannot get the legal help they need. Now, your financial support, along with the support from other cities here on the east side, support from King County, and our countless individual donors allows us to serve clients, and we urge you to continue your support for Eastside Legal Assistance Program. Now again, I want to introduce our executive director, Stan Keel.
Good evening, Mayor Butler, members of the council. My name is Stan Keel. I'm the executive director of Eastside Legal Assistance Program. Our offices are at 1239 120th Avenue Northeast, Suite J, in Bellevue, Washington. I would also like to speak briefly on behalf of the Association of Eastside Agencies. Some of you may be familiar with the Association of Eastside Agencies. ELAP is a member of that organization. We attempt to take and coordinate activities with respect to providing services throughout all of the east side, and we believe that it's a valuable cooperative effort to take and address the human service needs of people here on the east side. With respect to ELAP and the new program that Doug mentioned, we are starting our ELAP Family Law Fellowship, and that is a program where we will take new attorneys fresh out of law school who are not going to work in a large law firm but want to start a small law practice, who don't have clients yet, don't have training in how to use the court system to benefit their clients, don't know how to set up a law office, and we'll give them a year's worth of training. What we'll ask from them in return is to volunteer with us 20 hours a week for the year, serving domestic violence survivors. We're just in the process of starting the program now. We expect to have our first class of new attorneys onboard August 1st. We have an advisory board of 12 people from the community and our board that are advising us, people from Seattle University Law School, people from the University of Washington Law School, so a great group of advisors, and the result will be three things. One, probably 120 or more domestic violence survivors each year will receive legal services that will help them with their health and safety. Two, these five to eight new attorneys initially, and then as it grows over a year, additional attorneys will be trained in how to provide great family law services to domestic violence survivors, and then when they go out on their own and have completed their fellowship with us, they will be a pool of attorneys who can serve in capacity with legal clinics and with other domestic violence survivors. Three, for their entire career, they will hopefully be connected to pro bono services. So, we thank you for your past support that you've provided for us. We hope as a part of the pooled cities process where you see our new application that you'll be able to provide us some increased funding to help with this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Alex Zimmerman, followed by Chris Shepherd.
Hi, my name is Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America, and I spoke with this office before. You probably remember me. I have a very simple proposition. Why we need public comment? Why we need listen to people? How about five minutes, what you have? We move to two minutes. Less people will speak is better for everybody. This look like a Nazi Germany and Tories, but this makes situation absolutely better for control. So, who support me? Nobody? Hair? Nobody? Strange. So, Mayor Fred Butler did this in Sound Transit. He moved from three minutes to two minutes for last six months he's staying. Before in Sound Transit, public comment open, everybody can speak for three minutes and no limitation. He not only used move from three minutes to two minutes, he used police forces for somebody who have different opinion. Why he did this? Why you keep him in this chair? A man who cut constitutional right, freedom of speech, and cut from three minutes to two minutes. Three minutes is too much for people talking? Too much for explain public comment? It's America. It's not German Nazi in Tories. Why you keep him in this position? Ain't he doing this for a long time? I see him in many committee for last five years. Four, maybe five. Guys, we have a very unique situation. You understand what this mean? This Democrat Nazi mafia control everything right now. Two minutes come when Don Constantine come. He totally cut everything. He cut from three minutes to two minutes. Guys, it's a fundamental of constitution. It's a fundamental of freedom of speech in business sense. Is this a Tory percentage cut? Can you imagine when your salary will be tomorrow cut by Tory percentage from $60,000 to $40,000, for example? Are you will be happy? I don't think so. So why you keep him in this chair? A man who cut a basic fundamental American principle of democracy. How is this possible? You understand what I'm talking? Ask him, why he doing this? What is his motivation? We same age with him. You understand what this mean? Why I want protect constitution and freedom of speech, and he destroy constitution, destroy freedom of speech, and destroy America? You understand, guys? It's not small problem. It's a fundamental problem of American democracy who exist for 200 years. Is this a point what is very important? So my proposition very simple. Fire him is exactly what is supposed to be doing right now. When we don't change this, we will go wars and wars and wars. We fallen and fallen and fallen because people cannot speak. People cannot explain opinion, different opinion. East America about? I fight for this country for all my life. Half my life in Soviet Union against communists, half my life against crook like him. Hair. You understand? Because it's massive right now situation what is we have right now. So my proposition very simple to everybody who listen me. Fire him. He did something what is not supposed to be exist in America. And exactly in 2014, guys, about you talking, how you can cut from three minutes to two minutes. Even you go to website, Sound Transit, it's a three minute. So I spoke many time in Sound Transit for last six months. Guys, are you crazy? Are you a psychopath?
One minute remaining.
Thank you very much. I don't need more because it's very simple, guys. It's your duty, change this, bring back America back. So one way what is you can doing right now? Fire him. Thank you very much.
Next is Chris Shepherd.
Sorry for this. This is for everyone's well-being. I'm a resident at 370 Northeast Birch and a business owner in Issaquah, and we've had the privilege of being on the Citizens Advisory Committee with these two gentlemen for this class skate park, a less controversial subject, I'm sure. And, you know, one thing we've noticed is that there has been, it seems like, some communication to the council indicating that the methodology, maybe some of the site selection was flawed, and I certainly am not an expert in site selections or methodology for such for public parks, but your team at Parks and Rec did a remarkable job. They provided transparency and I think an excellent forum to discuss options, not necessarily even, hey, what are you doing? Not necessarily even, you know, there's a lot of neighborhoods, not even specific neighborhood, but really for Issaquah as a whole. And so I have no real agenda other than that, is just to get behind the recommendations the committees made and your Parks and Rec staff that have been onboard. For the record, I live in downtown Issaquah. Our preference was for the location behind the police station, really because of the central location of the park, easy access to schools, public transit. We understand there are some complaints, or some objections that we maybe don't necessarily agree with, and there's also some infrastructure issues. But that being said, our second option at Tibbetts was fantastic, and I think, maybe not a unanimous choice, but certainly a very strong second runner. So, thank you for the time, and thanks truly to the Parks and Rec team as well. They did a great job.
Next is Linda Whitworth, followed by Sean Doherty.
Good evening. My name is Linda Whitworth. I reside at 2404 35th Avenue Northeast up in Issaquah Highlands. I have been a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the skate park since the first meeting, and during our meetings, we had great discussions as we were trying to select which sites we thought were the best for the skate park here in town. We did have two public meetings where we asked the community to give us their input as to which sites they thought were the most preferable to them. As our meetings went on, I tended to lean towards the Tibbetts Valley Park site, which we did recommend as our first choice, because there are other sports activities there, there's public transit, there is plenty of parking for people that would be driving to the area, and there are also places where people could get food and beverages if they so desired. In our discussions, we mentioned the word destination and referred to that as this would be a place where the skaters would go to, and by doing so, it would eliminate some of the negative influences that are surrounding the present skate park, and so that would probably not transfer over to the new park. Also in our discussions, it was brought up that one-third of the city's population lives up in the Highlands, leaving two-thirds of the city's population living down here in the valley. And it is of my opinion that the majority should have precedence over the site selection and have it easily and conveniently located for them. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and council members. My name's Sean Doherty. I'm a homeowner here in Issaquah. I live at 310 First Avenue Northeast, just a block and a half from here. I also was a member of the Citizen Advisory Committee for the skate park. I am very grateful to be participate in that. I'm a longtime skater. I've been skating for over 40 years. My son grew up, went through all the schools here in Issaquah. He also frequented that park, and so I have a very personal interest in the relocation and rebuilding of that skate park. I think that the park board did a super job in basically getting together a very diverse group to discuss and talk about the different locations and the challenges for relocating the park. I think, me personally, I had an affinity also for the site behind Memorial Field, but through the dialogue, the public input and other discussions, changed my preference to what was my second choice, which was the Tibbetts location, primarily for the kids, because I think there's still some other issues with this downtown location behind the police station that I thought would be a negative impact to smaller and younger children. But I applaud the Parks Department and the way they ran all the meetings and the public inputs, and we really did do diligence in looking over the different site locations and coming up with a recommendation. That's all my comments.
That's all the public comments that we have signed up.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to comment this evening? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor Butler and council members. I apologize for not signing up. I slipped in the door right where you're closing up. My name's Gio, or George Tamblyn. I go by Gio. I'm a resident of 584 Southeast Bush Street. I'm also a part business owner of Superior Seconds at 96 Front Street South. I was also a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, excuse me. Too many commies. Also a member of the Drug Free Community Coalition. So I had, wearing a couple different hats as Assistant Advisor, or, excuse me, Advisory. But I also wanted to start by saying how I felt honored and privileged to be a part of it, and to the very end, I felt that way. I did slip in late once or twice, but I was at every meeting, including the public hearings, and I felt the process was actually enlightening to the youth involved also, which was great to see, that our voice is heard and we can make a difference, and I thought that was just a great experience, as well as the park, just being a great group to work with. And I was gonna say board, but it wasn't the board, it was actually Parks Department, for the most part. So I was the one person that literally voted no, but I was also part of the unanimous vote to submit it to the Parks Department as our first preference at Tibbetts. I personally also sort of liked, I liked behind the police station. So I did raise my hand to vote that, but seeing as we were voting to, if we've all felt it was appropriate to submit the site that won that vote to the Parks Department Board, and the process was so clean and fair, I felt that it would be inappropriate for me to vote against it at that point, to be presented to the park board as the number one choice, because it clearly was. There was a great discussion around it at every meeting, the youth involved and the skaters involved, old and young. I think everybody was unanimously onboard with it being a big concern about the influence around the skate park today, not following it to the new park of tomorrow. And I do believe that was a big part of Tibbetts being coming our first choice, and a great second choice being behind the police station, always a viable choice also. But again, I just wanted to finish up saying how I was honored and feel like the process was more than equitable, and it's great to see that a common guy and kids can come in and feel like they've made a difference and a great project for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward, please.
So I'm Liam Green. I'm a resident. So, I'm Liam Green, I'm a resident, I live on 12th Avenue, up on Squawk Mountain by Tibbetts, it's just up over there. And I wanted to talk about underage drug use, and it's mostly near the, the trail by the middle school behind the skate park and at the skate park. So I was thinking maybe we could, like, enforce the, the laws near the skate park, the, we could have, like, since it's being relocated, we could probably set up some security cameras there, maybe. But that's pretty much all I want to talk about, so.
My name's Michael Andries, I'm a resident here in Issaquah, and I love it here. And I live at 260 Newport Way Northwest, just, just in between the library and Target. And I just want to kind of follow up on Liam's statement about drug use next to the skate park. And as we all know, there's trails that lead away from the skate park and go behind the middle school sometimes, and, and there's been high schoolers and just people there just, like, selling marijuana, and they'll be right behind the school, bellowing it out to nobody in particular. And, like, my friend and I, we're doing a sport after school now, so we were there to witness it. And I've biked that trail every once in a while, and I love to bike, so that's kind of a good trail that I like to go on, and sometimes I'll be biking down there and I'll hear people jumping into the bushes and silence, and then I'll bike past and I just won't hear anything after that. And then I've heard stories of people having guns pulled on each other, and we all know that that's not good. But, yeah, I'd just like to say, like, I know everything's, is being done, that can be done currently over there, and I just want to provide a little more info and another perspective for all that. And I'd like to leave that with you, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak? Anyone else? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak this evening? With that, then, audience comments are closed, and we will move now to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to share a report about the Cascade Water Alliance celebration last week, when they had a big party for fifteenth anniversary of the organization. Issaquah is a founding member of the Cascade Water Alliance, and Mayor Butler serves as the Alliance's secretary currently. I'm an alternate board member, and I serve on the Resource Committee. Just for those who may not know, Cascade Water Alliance supplements Issaquah's local water supply by providing water directly to the residents of Issaquah Highlands. But most important, one thing I'm learning is how important the assurances are that the Alliance provides for future water supplies. The Alliance provides its member cities, and they include not just Issaquah, but Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Taquilla, the Sammamish Plateau, and Skyway Water and Sewer Districts. And the Alliance provides these members a powerful position in the marketplace for buying water, and also for advocating for policies that are made at the state and regional level in the best interest of our member communities. One of the most notable actions by the Alliance was the recent purchase in 2009 of Lake Taps for water supply, not currently being used, but could be used if necessary. Cascade is recognized as a leader, not just here at home, but also nationally, for its collaborative and environmentally responsible approach to water supplies. The event that was held last week attracted about three hundred people from all over the region, had very high-profile, nationally-known speakers who came out to join in the celebration of Cascade Water Alliance and its approach to the water, water resource management, and it was great to be there.
Thank you. Councilmember Polly.
Two items, Mr. Mayor. The Chamber of Commerce will be having just an executive committee session this week, so city staff and myself as liaison will not be attending. Chamber meeting in May, and we are invited in June, and the request has been made to deliver a presentation on the goals that were just proposed and approved last weekend. Second item is the King Conservation District Advisory Team Executive Committee is meeting this week at the Bellevue Library, 12 o'clock to 1:30, and they are continuing their work on the 2015 work plan and budget. And that's it.
Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, May 13th, the Council Land and Shore Committee met here in chambers. We had three issues in front of us. The first was Agenda Bill 6705, I-502 recreational marijuana regulations. We voted three to zero to move that bill forward with recommended code amendments and in parallel, the lifting of the moratorium, hoping to have that bill come back before council on June 2nd. The second bill was Agenda Bill 6818, Talis Parcel 789 Preliminary Platte. This is the subject of a, I'm blanking on the legal term, quasi-judicial proceeding. So all I will say is that we voted three to zero to bring it forward, including edits to proposed conditions. And then finally, we looked at Agenda Bill 6821, review of bids for surplus property. That bill is part of the consent calendar on this evening's agenda. And then on, second report is that on Wednesday, May 14th, the SCA Public Issues Committee met down in Renton, and we had a couple of issues that we looked at, including oil train safety. We looked at a potential position on oil train safety, and I will, I'll just read it, and then I will ask if people want to get back to me. I, I don't think we necessarily need to cover it a lot this evening, but, "In order to address the dramatic increase in the amount of oil being transported through our region by rail and vessel transport through our bodies of water, the potential impacts on public safety and economic disruption from a possible crude oil spill incident, the Sound Cities Association supports asking the federal government to implement safety regulations regarding oil transport via rail, and urges the Washington State Legislature to adopt legislation promoting rail safety. SCA acknowledges there are measures in place to promote the safety of marine transportation and protect state waters from oil spills, but urges the federal government and Washington State Legislature to review those measures due to the increased movement of crude oil. SCA also urges rail companies to share the following information with local companies, communities, I'm sorry, so they may be fully informed and plan for the risks posed by the transport of oil by rail. Types of petroleum being transported, transportation routes, the frequency and duration of transfers of petroleum, and efforts and actions to ensure the safe transport of such commodities. SCA urges the King County Office of Emergency Management to review and update the county's incident response plans to address the risk from increased transport of petroleum by rail." This issue is planned to come back before SCA pick next month, so if anybody has any thoughts on this issue that they would like me to include in consideration, I would, it would be great. And that is it in terms of actionable items for, for this month. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on Thursday, the 15th. We first discussed Agenda Bill 6817, which is the bid award for the Rainier Boulevard project. This is a low-impact development project, which will hopefully be done before Salmon Days this year. The project needed some additional funds to cover the construction costs based on the low bid that was submitted. Based on the presentation that was given by staff, the committee was satisfied with the explanation of the additional funds and recommended it to the consent calendar on the June 2nd council meeting agenda. We also had Agenda Bill 6790, dealing with a lease agreement update with AT&amp;T. This deals with antenna near Central Park, new antennas planned to be installed for better coverage. It was informed, we were informed that an amendment to the lease agreement with AT&amp;T would be required as part of doing that, so we also recommended approval to the June 2nd consent calendar. We had an informational update regarding the Mount Park Booster Pump Station, which is currently out to bid. Doing this booster pump station update, retrofit, whatever you want to call it, will eliminate the need for building a new reservoir at Mount Hood, which would have very significant impacts to the surrounding community residences, et cetera. In addition, the city is expected to be receiving $400,000 from our partners with Rowley Properties as part of the booster pump station update. We also had a discussion of what is now labeled Agenda Bill 6819, the 2015 to 20 Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP. Upon approval of tonight's consent calendar, this bill will be forwarded for a public hearing to come back to the full council on June 16th. So if you are interested in attending that public hearing, it will be scheduled June 16th at council chambers, normal meeting time, beginning at 7 o'clock. There are a number of new projects on the TIP this year, which is due to the creation of the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, which has identified a number of non-motorized needs around the city. So we have a fairly extensive list to take a look at on the TIP. Keep in mind that this is not a prioritization of the projects, the order that they're listed on the TIP doesn't necessarily indicate which ones the city values more than others, or which ones will occur before others, it's simply a list that gets submitted in order to comply with state law and make us eligible for certain types of funding. The committee is expecting to take a look at the prioritization of projects and make recommendations back to the council in response to the mayor's transportation recommendations, and we're hoping to do that at our next meeting, which will be Thursday, June 19th, at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. So if you have comments on particular projects or where they should be prioritized, that might be a meeting, if you're a member of the public, to consider attending. I would note a particular import to some residents, that the Northwest Sammamish Road potential study is now budgeted with, with a possible $50,000, excuse me, $50,000, which is far less than last year in terms of what was expected for the cost of that study to involve, it's, it's a much smaller scope. We also took up Agenda Bill 6707, which is a grant from the Department of Commerce regarding improvements on Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway, which can be used for property acquisition and/or non-motorized improvements. The committee recommended approval of that bill to the consent calendar on June 2nd. And finally, we had a, an informational update on the North Issaquah Roadway Network Transportation Improvements and an overview of the projects. Just very briefly, so the public is aware, there are a suite of improvements planned for the North Issaquah Roadway Network. This consists of the area between Westlake-Sammamish Parkway, kind of near the Fred Meyer and Home Depot, all the way down to 12th Avenue on the north side of I-90 by the Holiday Inn. That entire area would be considered for a suite of improvements between approximately 2015 and 2020. The Westlake-Sammamish Parkway piece would go first with the addition of a new southbound lane, so you'd have two lanes going all the way down from 56 down to the freeway entrance at exit 17. The second phase of that project would be a connection along Lake Drive that would connect in 62nd into the back of the Costco development, and that would be a new connection with a new roundabout planned for what is currently the intersection where 62nd meets 4th Avenue after you come out of the undercrossing. And then finally, the last piece would be by 12th Avenue over by the Holiday Inn at State Route 900, and that would be an expansion of that intersection, including double turn lanes. The reason that piece is going to be last is because in order to accommodate the closures that will be necessary at that intersection, the piece over by Lake Drive needs to be constructed first to alleviate some of the traffic coming out of the Pickering Center. So, there's a whole sequence of the projects that will come into play over the next five or six years, but the ultimate goal is to have some very significant transportation improvements on the north side of I-90. Just very briefly, also, the Eastside Transportation Partnership, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I believe you said Westlake-Sammamish.
Did I say west? It's east.
Actually, Eastlake-Sammamish, just a point of clarification.
East, Lake Sammamish, thank you. East. I got all the other streets right, though.
You did.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Second brief report, the Eastside Transportation Partnership met on May 9th, and we had a report from Puget Sound Regional Council on regional transit coordination. We had an update from King County Metro on their service cuts and impacts to roads in the county based on the defeat of Proposition 1. There was a lot of doom and gloom concerning the outlook for the county and its road network and its transit. The, the partnership was very interested in hearing some suggestions and solutions, which I'm not sure we, we really got at this meeting, so we may take that issue up again to talk about what options for the east side we have. And finally, we talked about our strategic planning session, which will be a full-day retreat for ETP in lieu of the July 11th meeting, so if you're interested in attending that, please mark off Friday, July 11th. And with that, my reports are concluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. There is two items this evening on this evening's agenda from our May 1st Services and Safety meeting. The first is a cemetery maintenance fee, which is going to be on consent agenda this evening, and the second one from the May meeting is the skate park proposed site location. We'll have greater conversation in regards to that later on, we've got staff with us this evening to present that. The June 5th meeting, so far, there are only two items forward on our proposed agenda, and it's a public art purchase called "The Spirit of American Memorial," and this is being referred from the Arts Commission. And the second one is Agenda Bill 6824, and it's a Sprint telecommunications facility lease agreement. So that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Gooden.
No report.
And Council President Winterstein.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. I have two committee reports. First, a regional committee that I participate in, the Eastside Human Services Forum. The forum will be sponsoring an event on Wednesday, June 12th, to talk about the proposed minimum wage hike that Seattle is considering, and how it might impact, if, if such a movement were to be considered statewide or on the east side, what the impact would be. And so I'm going to read real quickly a, the press release that we sent out about this June 12th event at 7:30 in Bellevue, at the Bellevue Red Lion. How does Seattle Mayor Murray's proposal to increase the city's minimum wage to $15 an hour impact the rest of King County? The event, Toward a Livable Wage: Implications for Business, Community, and Nonprofits, will bring the conversation to the east side on June 12th. The breakfast event hosted by the Eastside Human Services Forum will feature information on the minimum wage debate and perspectives from businesses and nonprofit leaders. Senator Mark Mullet of the 5th Legislative District will be part of the panel presentation. Senator Mullet is the owner of Zeke's Pizza and Ben &amp; Jerry's Ice Cream in Issaquah. Additional panelists include John Burbank from the Economic Opportunity Institute, Jasmine Donovan of Dick's Drive-In Restaurants, Sylvia Firstenberg from the Arc of King County, Deborah Lerman from San, from the San Francisco Human Services Network, and Lori Finkst, Washington State Budget and Policy Center. The panel moderator will be James Whitfield, the President and Executive Director of Eastside Leadership, excuse me, Director of Leadership Eastside. So again, the, the event is free to all who want to participate. It'll be at 7:30 at the Red Lion on June 12th, the Red Lion in Bellevue, and that, they're a generous host who, who is making both the facility and the breakfast free, available to all, all who want to participate. I'll be there, I'll be the moderator for the event, so I'm really looking forward to every, both our business owners, people who are just generally concerned about a livable wage on the east side. So that was my first announcement.
How to register?
Oh, oh, thank you. That's a really good question. I was asked by Councilmember Polly how to register. Go to the Eastside Human Services website, it's eastsideforum, all one word, eastsideforum.org, and it's right on the homepage, directions, a link to the event and how to register, eastsideforum.org. The, my second announcement has to do with this entire council and many members of our city staff, including the mayor and city administrator. We met on this past Saturday for a retreat to complete our goal selection, and a week ago tonight, in this very room during our work session, we went through all of the sixteen goals that had been proposed by members of this council. A week ago, it was just a go-through, get a basic understanding of the goals, and then on Saturday, we met and spent a lot more time looking at the goals, we deliberated the goals, and at the end of the day, we selected five goals to go forward. Now, there's going to be more of a report on, report out on the results of the goal selection process, I think should be, the details are still to be worked out, but it will be available on the city website. And, but I will just report that five goals were selected, one had to do with One had to do with the creation of a transportation master plan. Another had to do with the revitalization of the Old Town area. The third one had to do with the taking a look at a possible anchor project for the Central Issaquah Plan area. The fourth goal had to do with measuring and holding ourselves accountable for our goals of providing housing, affordable housing, to lower and living wage earners within Seattle. So it's really about the availability of affordable housing. And finally, the fifth goal had to do with the city committing itself to working with our partners within the community to address really drug abuse problems within the city. There was a comment tonight from the gentleman here about that. And this council, and I think this city, is aware that, and we acknowledge that the scourge of drugs within Issaquah is a tide that we much rise up against. There are citizens within our community who are doing something about it. And this fifth goal is intended to put more of the city's resources to, in conjunction with organizations, perhaps like the school district, hopefully definitely the Drug-Free Coalition as well. And so that was the fifth goal, was a commitment to put more cities, of the city's resources into addressing that problem. So there'll be more information about all the goals that we selected available on the insight, excuse me, on our website. So those are my two reports. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for the mayor's report. I'm proud to announce that Standard and Poor's has upgraded the city of Issaquah's bond rating to AAA, the highest possible score. The bond rating is a reflection of credit worthiness and affects the cost to the city of issuing debt. The upgraded rating helps lower the interest rates for the city's bond sales, which reduces borrowing costs for the city and our taxpayers. I would like to thank our Finance Department for its hard work every day and especially during the rating process. I would also like to thank our Economic Development Department for its assistance in telling Issaquah's story. Secondly, if you're looking for a job and you are between the ages of 16 and 24, mark your calendar. The inaugural Issaquah Job Fair will be held in the Pickering Barn on May 28th of this year from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. Whether you're searching for the perfect summer job or hoping to jumpstart your career, find the right position for you at the Issaquah Job Fair. And for more information, visit our website at issaquahwa, that's all one word, .gov/business. All aboard! The Issaquah Valley Trolley has returned. The vintage trolley resumed service this past weekend. Once it enters regular operation, the car will depart from the depot from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. The Issaquah Valley Trolley at all volunteer operation is also seeking additional volunteers for the season. To learn more about volunteer operations, visit issaquahhistory, all one word, .org. Our Passport Services are on the move. Starting June 3, the city will relocate its Passport Services to City Hall Northwest and offer appointment-only service. Applicants will be accepted by appointment only from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. To schedule an appointment, please call 425-837-3003. Or for more information, visit the city's website at issaquahwa.gov/passports. May is Bike Month. Washington was recently named the nation's friendliest state for bicyclists, and Issaquah's proud to be a part of that effort. We celebrated Bike Month by hosting a Bike-to-Work Day Station this past Friday, May 16th. We had 133 bike commuters stop by for snacks, maps, water, and other giveaways. Yesterday, at the Pickering Barn, we held a kids' bike rodeo where we had 60 children join us for cycling fun and free helmet fittings and learn about bike safety from our police officers. Finally, Issaquah's competing with Pualup and Redmond in Puget Sound Energy's 2014 Take Charge Green Power Challenge to see which city can claim the title of greenest town in the Puget Sound. Each city has set a goal to see how many additional homes and businesses sign up for Puget Sound Energy's green power program, which allows Puget Sound Energy electric customers to pay a little more to guarantee some or all of their energy is from clean, renewable sources. For more information, please visit pse.com/gpcchallenge. And that concludes the mayor's report. Moving now to the consent calendar, have the accounts payable and payroll been reviewed?
Reviewed.
I'm sorry, reviewed.
And does anyone want to remove from the consent calendar any of the items listed? Seeing none then, Council President Winterstein?
I would move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, our first item of regular business is Agenda Bill 6804, Skate Park Proposed Site Location. This is coming back from the Services and Safety Committee, and I believe, are you going to introduce the presentation?
I will.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got just a brief introduction, and then Brian and staff have a presentation and open for question and answer after that. The park, the skateboard park as we know it today, started out as a really grassroots effort with a group of youth that came in 1995 and '96 constantly to the council, petitioning that they needed and wanted a skateboard park. And they really continued to petition and came, you know, meeting after meeting to let us know how important, I wasn't on there, I was on the park sport at the time, but how important that skateboard park was to them. And they even came one night with a tin can, a coffee can, filled with coins and dollars. They had been out collecting, so they were really desirous of this skateboard park. And they were working forward their effort, as we're seeing in the youth today that are with us this evening. You know, they're recognizing what's been going on at the skateboard park and are involved citizens. These young boys really wanted this skateboard park. But unfortunately, over the years, even with increased police efforts, the secluded location of where the park had been located presented safety challenges. You know, plus skateboarding has changed a bit over time. And so the community desired a new skateboard park that was more appealing, has more amenities for the skaters of all ages, easier access, and safer for all the skaters. So in 2013, one of the goals was to relocate or enhance the skateboard park. Funding came from $200,000 from Parks Mitigation Fund, $150,000 from real estate excise tax. It was reviewed by Services and Safety Committee on May 1 meeting. There was discussion and questions regarding the safety issue, the budget, if $350,000 was really truly enough to be able to be sufficient and have an adequate park. The committee members were in agreement that Tibbetts Field was a good location and recommended to move forward to the full council. So Brian, I'm going to turn it over to you from there. And you can tell us the rest of the story.
Yeah, I'll give you my little presentation. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Brian Burnson, and with me tonight is Ross Hoover. We're both with the Issaquah Parks Recreation Department. We're here tonight to seek council approval for Tibbetts Valley Park as a location for a new skate park. At the Services and Safety meeting on May 1, staff was asked to provide a brief presentation defining the background and process for selecting Tibbetts Valley Park as the preferred location for a new skate park in Issaquah. I'll try to do that quickly, and I commend you all for having such a long weekend, because I know you guys have put in a lot of hours recently. So I'll keep it hopefully short and sweet. Building a new skate park was a council goal in 2011 and one of council's top-five goals in 2013. A new skate park was initially proposed in the 2013 park bond and was later removed. Realizing the skate park was not included in 2013 park bond measure, a group of citizens came before council and shared their desire for a skate park within Issaquah. In response to citizens' request, council directed the staff to include $350,000 in the 2014 preliminary budget. And if it was approved, the next steps would be to seek feedback and feedback on the project through public input meetings and social media outreach, to determine an appropriate location and design for a skate park, and ultimately to build a new skate park. Upon approval, staff moved forward with developing a Citizens Advisory Committee. Here we have a list of the Citizens Advisory Committee members. I just wanted to show that to you here tonight, and fortunately, a number of committee members showed up and spoke. As you can see from the list, the committee is a diverse group of individuals from our community, including people from the Issaquah Park Board, Issaquah Police Department, Drug-Free Community Coalition, Issaquah School District, business owners, and skaters. Little bit on our process, a quick review of our process. Upon council direction, staff began moving forward with determining the location for a new skate park. Using a wide range of social media tools, the Communications Department reached out to the community, keeping everyone informed of what was going on as well as seeking input regarding the project. A Citizens Advisory Committee was formed. This committee met four times and held two public input meetings. The committee had discussion on and gave careful consideration to the various attributes of the proposed locations, as well as the public input that was received throughout the process. The Citizens Advisory Committee unanimously agreed to move forward with Tibbetts Valley Park as the preferred location for a new skate park. The Park Board reviewed the Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendation and unanimously agreed to recommend this site to the mayor and administration. The mayor and administration approved of the Park Board's recommendation. The recommendation was brought to the council meeting on April 21st under consent, then went before Services and Safety on May 1st, and is now before you tonight for your approval. Just a real quick overview of the site. Here we have, here we have an overhead view of the proposed site within Tibbetts Valley Park. It's bordered by SR 900 on the west and Newport Way and the transit center there on the north. Next, we have a couple pictures of just a real quick ground-level view for you. This is facing east. And this is facing west. Tibbetts Valley Park was selected as the preferred location for a number of reasons. Some of these include being highly visible, being accessible to drivers, bikers, walkers, and is located next to a major transit line, accessible to amenities such as restrooms, parking, water, fire station, and food. The site does not have issues with underground utilities. It would become part of a site that already accommodates a variety of different users. It will be located near the future Central Issaquah Plan development. It will be a destination location where people will be going there to skate. At the Services and Safety meeting, the question of whether or not there would be enough funding for the skate park came up. During the allocation process in 2013, staff presented the following data to council. Here we have a cost, here we have cost estimates from three professional skate park companies with estimates ranging from $30 to $40 per square foot for design-build. Here we have another slide that was presented to council in 2013 that outlines the estimates for building different sizes of skate parks ranging from $35 to $40 per square foot. As I mentioned in 2013, and would like to mention again, these are estimates, and the best that we can come up with without any, without actually having any bids for the We've done some additional research, and here we have a breakdown of some of the actual projects recently completed by a variety of professional skate park companies in a variety of locations. As you can see, these range anywhere from $30 to $40 per square foot. Upon council approval, our next steps will be to select a professional design and construction consultant. We will involve the Citizens Advisory Committee, community, and staff in developing a design for the new skate park, and we will build and open a new skate park in Issaquah. Thank you. Are there any questions? Or I can go back.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
I guess I don't call on you, do I? I'm sorry, Mayor.
So how large is the site, the recommended site, and maybe how does that compare to the existing skate park?
Oh, good question. The existing site is 5,600 square feet, and the new skate park site is going to accommodate anywhere probably between 6,000 and 9,000 square feet. In talking to consultants, there's a good chance we'll be right in the 8,000 to 9,000 square foot range as we dial it in a little bit more. There's a lot of questions about whether or not with their sidewalk there and how much of that gets, but we're looking at a significant increase to the size that we have.
Okay. And I also see that the $350,000 is for constructing the new skate park but also repurposing the existing site. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. The direction we were given was to include enough that would be able to build a sufficient skate park in another location, as well as demolishing the existing skate park site. So there was money included in that initial amount that the council allotted in the 2014 budget to do both of those.
So it's a, so this says repurposing, so is it a demolishing and then we'll see what we're going to do with it, or?
Yeah, repurposing back to its natural state.
Okay.
And given that environment, low-lying, you know, bushes and whatnot, native plannings, but keeping it very and highly visible in that location as best we can, given that area.
Okay. That's more clear. Thank you.
And I would just point out that no decision has been made, you know, on what that is, and the administration has not made a recommendation yet to the council for that policy decision. Other, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. To continue, to hopefully continue discussion, I'd like to move this evening to approve Tibbetts Valley Park as a site location for the new skate park.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Additional discussion or questions? Councilmember Milligan?
Of course. Thank you. Thanks. Slipped it away. So now we have a few more numbers about the estimates of building the new park. And so help me put this back together. I think I wasn't listening well enough. Okay, so we have $350,000 total to do both the repurposing and the new park. And it looks like even if we go to the smaller size, like 8,000 rather than 10,000 square foot, how much money do you think we would need for repurposing? Because it looks like we might not have enough money for doing both things.
You know, in repurposing, we, I think we budgeted upwards of 50 for it, but it's not, it shouldn't cost us more. Without having an exact bidding, we're thinking it could be in the 15 to 20 range for that.
So is there already a plan for the what seems to be more than $350,000 cost total? Because if the new, is this, this is for the new park, right?
Yes.
These numbers right here? So say we go with an 8,000 square foot park, and it could be $320,000, and it's $50,000 for the repurposing. So then we'll be at 370. And that's, so that's what we're shooting for?
Yeah. I mean, the repur, the, as far as recondition, demolishing and reconditioning the site could be 15 to 20.
Oh, okay.
Right? And then we would have an additional, then, what, 330 on the higher end for the design build of a new skate park. And there's a lot of variations in the construction. It's what really does get, the metrics on it get very complicated, because some of the skate parks we looked at, you know, depending on if they have a real flat surface with very few elements, well, that's not as expensive to build. If you have a really big, deep bowl that requires some significant water drainage and runoff, and the elements you put in are a little bit on the higher end of things, you know, you're up at the higher end of the mark on all of that. So a lot of that pricing and stuff is going to be gleaned as we develop that design for the site and see what we come up with, you know, which we're shooting for something that would be, and accommodate all different levels of skaters.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Winterstein?
Two comments to follow on Councilmember Milligan's questions. I did a little math. If the demolition, repurposing seems like an odd word, but if we remove and the current for, say, that 20,000, leaving a balance of 330, using the square foot rate that the city of Sea-Tac... city of SeaTac did on theirs, that Brian had up earlier at $36 per square feet with the balance of 330,000, we would be able to get a part for at 9,167 square feet. So, just to give you an idea, because I had the same kind of question, and Brian said earlier, you know, maybe in the 8,000 to 9,000 square feet. So, just using the SeaTac square footage of $36 per square foot and the balance after removing, yeah, SeaTac, right. So, that's helpful for me, at least. Okay, that was my first comment. The second comment is, I want to thank everybody who participated in the citizens advisory committee, both those who came this evening and came to our committee meeting last month. And I, the testimony seemed very genuine, and also, I appreciated the sincerity of those who spoke up and said, "Boy, I thought this location," I say here, "Memorial Field," "but then I went through the process and, you know, I transitioned over to being able to support the Tibbetts location." Because that's the exact same way that I went. I was not a member of the advisory committee, but for many reasons, even before it started, I thought this would be, the Memorial Field would be an ideal location. And I spoke to a couple members even before the committee meeting last month about the process, about their thought process. And I really started to be, I started to see and understand what that transition that they went through. And then since then, since our services and safety committee, I've spent some time at the Memorial Field location, listening and thinking about the comments that were made about that location, both for and against. I spent some time over at the Tibbetts location and also thinking about the comments for and against. I spoke to families and potential skate park users, especially over by the Tibbetts, those that were interested in the Tibbetts location. We had some give testimony in favor of the Tibbetts location last month, or maybe at our last regular council meeting. And, you know, in the end, I get really grateful to all citizens advisory committee members. And it's absolutely impossible to have anything against their decision. Their recommendation, I fully support. The process we've gone through, now the park board for affirming that and for bringing this forward like this. I'm completely on board with this location. And again, I can't say it enough, it's primarily due to the effort and the testimony for those of you that were on that committee. It really, that was, it's a great example of, you know, this form of government we have is you all are part of the government. We just sit up here. But when people participate in advisory committees like the one we put together, that is government working. And it's, I'm just very proud of all our citizens for that effort. I'm proud to be able to accept that recommendation. You helped me transition from what I thought was a preferred site to the recommended one. So, I am going to enthusiastically support that we go forward with this recommendation.
Other questions, comments, or discussion? Councilmember Martsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a joyous day for me to be able to support this bill. This has been, this has been coming for a while. I appreciated councilmember Barber pointing out that it's really, if you consider the existing skate park, this has been coming for quite a long time. But I remember meeting with Sean Doherty in 2010 and his group and their efforts to try to get this moving again, and getting interviewed by the high school journalists for their morning program about the interest in resolving this, and having these issues come up at St. Michael's Episcopal, which I go to, it is right next door to the skate park. It's why we cleaned out all of our brush this year to help do our part to improve that area. And I want to echo the statements about the citizen committee. It was, I too, thought that Veterans Memorial Field was, reflexively, I thought it was my personal preferred location. But then, when we heard from the committee and from some of the folks here tonight, it just makes you realize that this process is really great when you engage the public and get these feedbacks. And it's also all the folks who continued to come before us. You know, I was actually out for two months last year. I had, I blew out my back. And my first meeting back was the first reading of the bill or the sending of the bill to committee that funded this because this is an issue that is not, you know, you're not going to get 80% of the population to say we need a new skate park. But for the people that knew it was important, it was a red-hot issue. And they came before us, and they convinced us, and they convinced us, we had a difficult budget session last fall, and because of the passion in the community that was conveyed to us, this survived that. It would have been very easy to put this up as a not essential issue, except it was essential, and the community let us know that. And so, thank you, and this is your victory here tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few thoughts. So, first of all, I think the report that's attached to the agenda bill is very comprehensive. It was really a pleasure to read that, not being a member of the services committee, to really be filled in on the information concerning the site options. And I didn't come into this process with any preferred site whatsoever. For me, Tibbetts, Memorial, any of the other sites, they were all fair game to consider. And I think early on in the process, there were even potentially others that didn't make the cut into these final ones. So, it really was a process that got whittled down. You know, I think, as been said, we've spent a lot of time on this single issue. Lots of audience comments, lots of meetings, lots of committee-level meetings and staff time. And so, I appreciate the really comprehensive look that's been put into this and the citizen participation in guiding this process along. I actually think if we did more of this sort of effort when it comes to transportation, we could really get people moving in this city with the amount of work that was put in on just this sort of project. Folks may recall that I did not support allocating the $350,000 until we had a site chosen with an estimate of the expenses. And I suppose we're fortunate that it's just falling in right around that $350,000 mark. I assume at some point we'll have a bid award to review to ensure that the costs fall in line, but it sounds like, at least based on the estimates presented this evening, that we're going to fall within the budget that was allocated, or at least very close to it. The other disappointment I had, I guess, in part of this whole process, though, is I wish we could have made more of a recreation destination or some form of comprehensive complex out of this effort. This is really, in my mind, a very one-off type of recreational use for this space. And it seems like if we want to enhance our visibility and viability as a recreational destination, not just within the community but for others in the region, that putting a skate park into a much bigger complex, a much bigger recreational opportunity, this really presented us with that opportunity to do that. But, you know, we have what we have, and we have this single proposal. So, when I looked at the report that was attached to the agenda bill and the recommendations, it appeared very quickly to boil down to Memorial Field or Tibbetts Valley, the West Parking Lot are the two primary options. And they both had very similar scores within a margin of error. And what really struck me, actually, were the con comments regarding Memorial Field in terms of my decision-making process. One of the comments that was made was, you know, building it behind a building is not a good choice for a skate park. And that really factored into my decision-making. Someone else said, "It really bothers me to see people saying how the park needs to be visible to police. Skaters aren't the problem despite popular belief. The visibility of the park to the city police should not be a deciding factor." And that resonated with me as well because the same person commented that he or she would not expect a soccer field or a tennis court to be near a police station. So, it seemed somewhat mildly discriminatory to be suggesting that we should have a skate park within the view of the police chief's window. I'm not sure why that's necessary. I understand that there's a lot of bad activity, drug activity, other things going on at the current location. I don't know if that's necessarily tied to the folks who use the skate park or just the fact that it's a secluded location. And I think comments were made earlier this evening regarding taking a look at that site and doing some policing or other measures that can hopefully stem the tide of what's going on there, but I don't necessarily think it's related to having a skate park. I think it's the fact that we've got some secluded trails, and it's close to the schools, and probably presents an opportunity for some negative behavior. There was also a comment made about small kids coming over to the skate park, et cetera. Again, I don't have personal experience with that. I don't know how often that sort of thing might happen. But one thing that struck me is over here at Memorial, you've got a kid's playground in very close proximity to the site that was proposed at Memorial. And the two uses just didn't seem to mesh in my mind, whereas at Tibbetts, you've got a real significant distance separation between the proposed skate park and where the kid's playground is. The other factors weighing in favor of Tibbetts, in my mind, access to transit with the transit center right across the street, the ease of availability of parking on-site and surrounding parking areas. And, you know, for the folks who are concerned about the visibility of the location, it's on a major street. It's right on Newport Way by 900. It's across from a transit center. There's cars driving by there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, if you are concerned about it being visible and folks not engaging in negative behavior because it's going to be in a secluded spot, Tibbetts is, in my mind, actually even more of a perfect location than hiding it back here behind a building on Memorial Field. So, when you take all of these factors into account and you do the computations, it really comes out, in my mind, to support the recommendation this evening, which is for the Tibbetts Valley West Parking Lot as the preferred and best site location for the park. So, I wholeheartedly support this bill and the recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman, followed by councilmember Milligan.
Thank you. So, I would plus one to all the comments tonight in support of the site, particularly to all the advisory committee members and all the hard work you did and the Parks and Rec Department for all of the hard work that you did in reviewing the sites and having all the open public process. All of that is very important and plays a huge role. This is, if it's approved, is a big move. It's also a big change in that it moves the skate park to the other side of town. And I think it's exciting for another reason as well, because I would venture to say that moving the skate park to that area will also serve to reinvigorate that area to some degree because we're soon to have an area that's a lot busier with many skaters and folks who are wanting to be there for that reason or be with family, and so we have potentially a lot of new customers over in that area. Also, as one of the council members who initially proposed the goal to move the skate park, I am wholeheartedly in support and very excited to see this move forward, and of course, I'll be supporting it.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for letting me double-dip here. I had my questions, but I still had comments. And thank you for your answers. The questions I had about budget are because I'm so keen to have the coolest skate park ever that I want to make sure we have the right amount of money for it and that we go for something that is highest in quality first and to plan for that within our budget. So, that was the reason for my questions. I want to speak a little bit on behalf of my neighbors in Issaquah Highlands, my two skaters at home, and our community have been looking forward to a new skate park for a long time. My youngest skater, now that he drives, goes to Summamish, Bellevue, and Mercer Island to skate, and my oldest skater just doesn't. And so, it would be just great to have a good skate park here in Issaquah. And being on the other side of town, probably the furthest from us as you can get, is that I hope that we will continue to talk about skate parks because Issaquah is a big town, and maybe there'll still be a day for us in Issaquah Highlands. But this park is first, and the process that the city went through was complete and engaging and professional. I really appreciate what the staff did and the citizens that volunteered their time. So, I know that we've come to the best decision that we can at this time, and it's going to be a great park. The last thing that I want to comment about is a reassurance. One of my concerns about moving the skate park was, we're moving it because of the social issues and the drug issues of that neighborhood. And I thought, well, moving the skate park isn't solving that problem. It's kind of running away from the problem. Now that the city has come behind a goal, a significant goal about a drug-free and safe Issaquah, I know that we will be tackling that subject on another path, and hopefully we'll solve both things then. We will be able to create a safer area around our schools, and we'll have a new skate park. And so, I will be supporting this agenda bill. Thank you.
Mary Lou Polly.
I figure I better say something. I will be the last in the shortest. Brian, a personal thank you for your stewardship of the process. I did go to one of your open houses, found it very enjoyable, very informative. I really got to see who was coming and what they were saying. Thought you did a great job. Even sent you and your staff an email after just to say I was so impressed with how you ran it, which is great. And I also wanted to thank the public. They've come out repeatedly, and it's so helpful for us when we hear directly from you exactly what it is that you want. So, thanks to the steering committee and the public. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
I'm going to pull in at the last spot here, okay? And I just want to say plus one to what I've heard from all the rest of my council members. But I especially wanted to make a comment in regards to Parks Department and their staff. They always come forward with an attitude to all these different activities that we ask them without any predetermined ideas of what they would like to see. It is solely and totally what the citizens of Issaquah want, is what they work towards. They come away with a very transparent process, and if they're not quite getting there, they'll come back and have a second meeting. But it's truly wonderful to be able to work with them and to have them help me understand everything, but to see that they don't have any preset agenda of what's going to be the outcome. They really want this to be driven by the citizens and the city of Issaquah, not by the city Parks Department. So, thank you to everybody because it does take those to attend these meetings, get involved to provide that input. So, hopefully, we can move to a vote now.
Is there any other discussion or questions that I believe we are ready to vote? I'd like to thank each of the council members for their very thoughtful comments on this issue. And all those in favor of approving the Tibbetts Valley Park as the site location for the new skate park signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and sport.
Moving now to Agenda Bill 6815, Washington City's Insurance Authority Council Do's and Don'ts. And Mary Lorna, are you going to introduce the presentation?
Yes.
And our presenter, Lisa Roberts, the Washington City's Insurance Authority's Risk Services Manager.
Yes. So, hi, I'm Mary Lorna Mead, the Risk Management Officer. And as I'm sure most of you know, we are part of a risk management pool, self-insurance. So, we pull together with, Lisa, what is it, 140 or so? 165 now, other public members, so that we get claim services, we get risk advice, we get pre-defense counsel, things that they take care of all of our claims and help us through everything, trainings like this. That way, we don't have to come to you for every time we have dollar-one claims or anything like that. So, they're one of the award-winning pools in the country, and I think we were one of the earlier members. I think we've been a member for 25-some years, and it's through an interlocal. And so, every two to three years, we either do, I think, a What is WCIA training or sort of this council best practices training. So, this time with having a couple new members and a little refresher, we thought we would do that again. So, here is Lisa Roberts from WCIA. And if you have any questions during it, please ask her.
Lisa, thank you again for visiting Issaquah and helping us out on this topic.
You're welcome. Nice to see you again, Mayor. And can those of you on the council that I met with several years ago and city attorney Tanaka, we've done a lot of work together in the past, and I imagine we'll continue to do so. As Mary Lorna said, I'm Lisa Roberts, and I'm the Risk Services Manager for Washington City's Insurance Authority. And we are an interlocal agreement between 165 municipal corporations to provide property and casualty insurance to our members. And we were formed back in the 1980s during what we call the hard insurance market. And those of you that might remember, back then, a lot of government couldn't get insurance. And it was shortly after our legislature had given up governmental immunity. And what the insurers found is that we weren't very good risks, frankly. And government, you know, government provides a lot of services that regular companies And government, you know, government provides a lot of services that regular companies really can't provide. And so we do take a lot of risks. And so commercial insurance companies weren't too thrilled to be providing that coverage. So nine city managers got together and approached the legislators and said, you know, can you help us pass a bill to allow us to self-insure? And that's what they did. And so they enacted RCW 4862, which allowed municipal corporations to pool their money together and literally provide claim services for their membership. Back then, we went bare. We literally paid our claims out of the money that we collected from our membership. Of course, we have, that was 30-some years ago, and we are a little more sophisticated now, but, and we have $20 million in coverage in many layers of reinsurance. But we still have $4 million of coverage that is within our self-insurance layer. And why that's important to you as the council is because we provide your E and O coverage. And so those decisions that you make for land use, those types of things that potentially the city could be sued for, we have a lot more discretion on what we might be able to provide than an insurance company. We don't have an insurance company telling us, no, that's excluded. No, you can't provide land use coverage. Many insurance companies actually don't provide land use coverage. We're one of the few that do. So that's important to you as a councilperson. During your tenure, you can rest assured that we're going to be there and stand behind you. And in fact, when you leave service, we're still going to be there and stand behind the decisions that the council made because we have occurrence-based coverage. And that's different than some carriers that provide claims-made coverage, which would mean when you went off the council, unless a claim was made during that year that you were on the council, you wouldn't have coverage. And that's not a good coverage to have. So we don't have that type of coverage. We have, we have occurrence-based coverage, always have, always will. Okay? So we were created in 1991. As your paperwork says here, we have 162 members, but now we really have 165 members because we've had three members join since you got your paperwork. So we have 174 million in assets. We're the strongest financially in the state and one of the strongest pools in the nation. As Mary Lorna said, we've won national awards for our programs in risk management, and so that's important to you too, so that you know that we're going to be there to be able to provide the coverage that you need. We provide auto liability, obviously, for the many, many autos that are driven throughout the city of Isaguas. We provide your general liability coverage. That's basically any time, any tort that's filed that you are found liable for, if the city wasn't negligent. That means somebody trips and falls on your sidewalk because some, for some reason, you were found liable for that. We'd be there to provide coverage for that. We also provide E and O coverage for the council, as I said. We provide your employment practices coverage. So in your form of government, the mayor and his role as the mayor, if you had any employment practices claims, we would be providing the defense for that and indemnification for that. And as I said, I already mentioned, the errors and omissions coverage. That also provides errors and omissions coverage for not only the council, but for your directors and officers as well. We have $20 million per occurrence. Does anybody think you need any more coverage than that? I hope not. That's a lot of coverage. Obviously, we have some sublimits for various types of claims, but in general, you have $20 million in coverage. As Mary Lorna mentioned, we have in-house claim services, and we also have Evergreen Adjustment Service that we contract with for those cities that may have a sewer leak, a sewer, you know, problem, auto claims, those types of things, so that they can arrive and, you know, show up in a timely manner. But the majority of the big stuff, we're handling in-house with our five claims adjusters. We also have in-house risk management services, and that's my side of the department. It's the prevention side of the department. So we have a lot of services that we provide under our compact that basically says the city will participate in a number of trainings that will basically help reduce the city's risks. Okay? They are required. The city participates. In fact, Isaguas is a very good risk, if you've noticed in the information that we provided you. You have a very good loss history. And thank you to the city for the level of participation that staff participates a lot in the trainings that we provide, and we really appreciate that. So they asked me here today to, this is one of the more general sessions that we have, trainings that we have. It does satisfy one of your compact elements for training, so you'll get credit for that. But basically, we like to talk to councils, particularly when you have new councilpersons, let them know, let you know that some of the exposures that councils can have. And those of you that have heard me speak before, this will be a little bit redundant, but it's always good to have a reminder, right? And the mayor's heard this many times, so he could probably be doing this himself. But anyway, so councils do have some pretty significant exposures, obviously, in the land use arena, arbitrary and capricious decisions, the appearance of fairness doctrine. That's one of the big areas, biggest areas that we've had, frankly, in our exposures. We had a $10 million lawsuit in the city of Burien that we lost pretty, pretty badly, actually. And so by the time we actually were able to pay that claim, because we went to London because our reinsurer decided they didn't think that we should cover land use claims, and we had to go fight our own insurer to tell them, no, you're our reinsurer, you follow our form, we cover land use for our cities because that's an exposure that they have, and you need to pay us back our money. And they did, but we had to go to London to get it. But that's, you know, part of the game, I guess. But so we are very committed to providing land use coverage for you. We also provide personnel coverage. That's one of the areas of exposure that we're going to talk about today. Harassment, discrimination, negligent misrepresentation, defamation, you can have qualified privilege and public works. Road design are some of the areas that, that we're going to talk about. So avoiding liability. Obviously, when you're up on the, on the dais, you guys have a lot of power and a lot of, you know, you have a lot of responsibility. Individually, you don't have any power. It's when you're together as a group that you have the power and that you have the legislative immunity. So that's something that you really want to remember as a councilperson, that you don't really want to step outside of that immunity and become personally liable for something that you might decide to do, go off and do on your own. You know, you adopt budgets, you create ordinances, resolutions, those types of things. And your power is really the budget. That's how you can affect change, is through the budget. When you start veering in, out of the legislative role into the executive branches, where you can get into trouble. In land use, you have a city attorney that's very well-versed in land use. We have worked very closely together on a number of different types of claims, so you have some good advice there. We're always there to help as well, and staff is very aware of how to get in touch with us when they need pre-defense. A city attorney can call us. The mayor can call us. The city delegate can call us. The city administrator can call us. So it's very important that you know that we're there and that we're able to provide assistance. In your form of government, it's important to know what your role is. You know, are you in a quasi-judicial role or are you in a legislative role? And that's where we've had cities that have run into problems. It's very difficult if you are in a quasi-judicial role, if you have interaction with community members. So make sure that you are understanding what, how you are dealing with that. Now, I am not that familiar with the city of Isaguas' hearing examiner system. I believe you have a hearing examiner. 99% of our members do have a hearing examiner and use a hearing examiner in some fashion, but many of them use them for certain things and not others. Many of them use them for everything. And, you know, we don't have, certainly, we would love it if all cities just used hearing examiners and didn't, didn't even hear anything, and they, it all went to Superior Court. But really, the important thing is, is if you're going to be doing, hearing any kind of quasi-judicial hearing, that you understand what you're doing and that you're doing it correctly and that you understand the process. We provide a lot of training for that. If you need help in that arena, you can certainly give us a call. All of our training for our member cities is free of charge, and we can send defense attorneys up that are land use experts to help in that process if that is one of the areas that you need. I told you a little bit about Westmark. That was, that was a case that was a no-growth city, basically, that, it was a brand-new city back when they first were formed, and the council didn't want apartment buildings, basically. And they just refused to allow a super permit to be issued, and they were found to have been tortuously interfering with the business expectancy. And it cost them 10, cost us $10 million, cost them a lot of money too, as a result of their premiums going up. So that was not a good, that was not a good result. We've also had, you know, other land use cases that have been fairly problematic as well. But generally speaking, we can defend these things and we can win them, as long as we get in there early and you give us a call and you let us know what the problem is. You know, we're there to help you. If you're interested in reading land use cases that are precedent-setting cases, the Mission Springs case is probably the, one of the more interesting ones. So land use, obviously, is a big deal. We can help you there. Personnel is another one, where councils tend to have some problems sometimes. And, you know, I'm sure Isaguas is not one of those councils that interferes in the executive branch, but it can be a problem, and there's always gray areas. So I encourage you to talk to your city attorney when you need, you know, advice in that area. But just remember that for your immunity, stay in the legislative role. Your name isn't in the personnel manual to go to. And that's where a lot of problems arise, when councilpersons insert themselves into that personnel process and have staff reporting to them directly on problems and trying to interfere with that process. That can be tempting at times, particularly if you know the people. But your role is setting budgets and policy, and that's really an important role. And let the executive branch handle that part. For that, the fact that the mayor has that power, he also has the ability to be sued personally for personnel matters. And so actually, are his managers able to be sued personally. So it's important that staff gets training. We provide training a lot to our, to our members. There's a variety of different personnel trainings that we provide by our defense attorneys that, again, is free of charge, and it's really important that you participate in that. And again, you guys really do. Anytime there's a hiring or a firing, particularly if there's adverse employment action, we encourage you to give us a call so that we can make sure that things are going the way that they should. And Isaguas is really good about participating in that. Negligent misrepresentation is kind of a, an interesting one for councils. And this is always difficult because councils, you know, you're, you're used to talking to the public, and I would just encourage you to, to be sure that you give thoughtful consideration to what you're going to say to the community when they, you know, during their public comment period, when they bring issues to you that you really want to solve. A good example of that was one of our mayors in a smaller city, that he had a, you know, a contingent of people come to a council meeting and demand that a stop sign be put in because this was a dangerous intersection in this one part of the city, a small city. And there was a lot of people there, and they were very insistent. And so the mayor said, you know what? We're going to solve this problem. We're going to put a stop sign in this intersection. Now, we would have advised that you, you know, ahead of time, that you think about giving that to your staff because they're well-trained and you probably have either a traffic engineer on staff or you have access to a traffic engineer. Traffic, you know, studies need to be made. The MUTCD is very specific about where you can and cannot put a stop sign. You can't just decide to put a stop sign wherever you want to, but, you know, buckling under public pressure. And the mayor stood up in one of our training sessions and said, you can use this story because this is really true. This is what happened to me. So, so a lot of people showed up. He insisted that they were going to put the stop sign. And he made a promise or assurance that they would solve that problem. Well, what do you think happened at the next council meeting? About three times as many people showed up and said, we don't want the stop sign because it's not safe and we've, you know, blah, 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 blah. So, you know, you can never solve the problem by just buckling under public pressure. So don't take matters into your own hands. Refer things to staff. You've got wonderful staff that are very well-trained. That's what they're there for. They can bring back a report to you and let you know how to address the issue. Defamation, you know, that's, we've had claims of defamation from the council. I have to admit, this is, this is a fairly rare situation because most of the time, when you are making statements in public, in your role, it's usually under legislative immunity. But where we've had councils go crazy or, you know, have a little bit of problem, was when they're off the council or there's, you know, it's not during a council meeting, and they take to their computer and they start talking about a citizen or a particular issue, and they are defaming somebody. You're stepping outside of your role as a legislator then, and you're also stepping outside of your coverage. So we're not going to follow you over into that role of, you know, blogging about somebody in the, in the community that you might get away with saying some of those things, you know, on the dais, but you really can't take it to your computer and start getting personal about other people. So make sure that, that you're careful about that. And again, talk to your city attorney about some of those fine points, or we can bring in, you know, defense attorney to do training on that particular issue, if that is an issue. As we talked about a little earlier, I did mention, under public works, we do have a lot of, street design claims can be very, very expensive and difficult to defend because they're technical. And unless you're a, a, a street engineer, you probably, you know, you get a jury full of people that aren't, you know, familiar with street design, it's pretty hard to explain to them why this, the city shouldn't be negligent on this matter. So don't politically engineer your situations, cross signs, signs, speed limits. Let your staff deal with those things. Ask staff for input. A really big one, another, you know, really big issue that you can actually watch on TV, if you want to watch a number of other cities' council meetings, you can see some interesting problems with leaking executive session information. And you've probably read about some of them in the paper. And I've never divulged the name of the members that are creating these problems, but this one is so well-known that, you know, I probably could tell you, but you probably already know. But it's really important, I guess, from our perspective, for you, for you to understand if you're talking about defense of litigation, from our perspective, if that's something that you're leaking, we're not okay with that because it's, it's our duty to defend the city. And if we can't do that because you're telling people what our defense strategy is, and that's what happened with one of the cities down the road from here, we're probably not going to be able to share that information with you anymore. So we wouldn't want you to do that. I mean, you wouldn't want to leak executive session information in any regard, anyway. Personnel matters, it's very difficult. If you know the people that are potentially being fired, they might be your friend. And it's, you know, you might hear about it in executive session, and that might be difficult for you to keep that quiet. But it's really important that you do that because they might have a constructive discharge claim if you are leaking that information and we're not able to effect that termination in the way that we should. So, and there's all sorts of sanctions, and it can be very ugly for councilpeople if you do that. It's just not a good idea. There's very few things that you can actually go into executive session for. So, you know, your, your city attorney can walk you through all those things. And so, you know, defense of claims or defense of potential litigation, personnel matters, and then, you know, sale of land. Well, if you're leaking the sale of land information, you're not going to be able to buy the land at any kind of reasonable cost, you know, as soon as they know that you're interested in buying a piece, purchasing a piece of property, that, you know, that property's going to go sky-high, right? So that's why you can discuss that. Personnel issues, obviously, you don't want to be talking about people's personnel problems in, in a public session. And then it's defense of potential litigation. That's very narrowly defined. So when there's something that we're involved with, that we're tendering, or, excuse me, if we're providing the defense, we're going to want to make sure that that, that strategy is kept quiet. So I know- So I know none of you guys, I'm preaching to the choir, but it's important that you understand how that works. It can jeopardize your defense. If you've done something, if you've provided information to the claimant and we can't provide the defense effectively, that can actually, you know, jeopardize your defense. And as I said, sanctions can be imposed. You probably have ethical ordinances, things like that, for your council. Most of the time, what happens is the political process works and you don't get re-elected and then, you know, that's the way that usually works. One of the newer ones, and I think this is my last slide that I wanted to talk to you about, yeah, is email and Twitter and electronic communications. What does the E in email stand for?
Electronic.
It does, did for electronic, but we like to say it stands for evidence. Imagine standing up in a courtroom and one of our defense attorneys having to defend your electronic communication that's blown up to about this size, Exhibit A or Exhibit B. You know, that's not easy to do. So I'm a pub, you know, I'm a public employee, as is Mary Lauren, as is all of us, you know, and your public officials. You really have no privacy. Everything we do, everything we write is a public record. And so you really have to keep that in mind, that anytime you write an email, it could potentially be published in the paper or blown up and, and become a Exhibit A or Exhibit B. So be careful about what you write and make sure, as a council, that you're not creating a violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine, that you're not establishing a quorum by, you know, talking electronically. The whole idea of, of open discourse is that you're discussing things in public. If you're not discussing it in public and it's just amongst yourself, then that's actually a violation. If you have city email addresses, use those. I'd encourage you to use those and not your personal email, simply because not only can the claim, the plaintiff's attorney, the claimant's attorney ask for your information from your personal computer, but so can we if we have to. And we would really like to be able to just stipulate that you, all of your official communications go through the city server. It's much easier for the city as, in terms of public records. And keep in mind, we don't insure public records. We don't provide coverage for public records violations. We cannot do that. It's a gift of public funds. The AG has already told all of us that you can't purchase insurance in order to break a law. So, you know, that's a fine and a fee. We don't cover fines and fees. So if the, if because of what you wrote on your personal computer and you get a, a public disclosure request, the city clerk gets a public disclosure request and they can't find that email of yours until later and it, you know, the deadline's gone by and the city suffers a huge fine as a result, that's not going to make you very popular with the city. And that's, and then they are really expensive, these fines. So be aware of that as well. It's not pleasant to have your, your, you know, personal computer taken from you and, and have some judge looking through it, deciding what is and what isn't a, a public record. You know, it, it may, you may not have anything on there that you would be embarrassed about, but you've got personal stuff on there. You've got your kid's pictures on there, you've got, you know, whatever. So, you know, it's just easier if you go through, go through the city server so that you don't have to worry about that search. And if you do have laptops that are issued from the city or any other electronic device that's issued by the city or even your own personal one, don't use it during the council meeting. We've had situations where councils persons have been talking to one another during the council meeting. That, again, is a, a violation or at least you're subject to public disclosure. And we had a situation where the city of, down the road, the, the, each one of the council people, a couple of the council people were talking to one another about their fellow council people. And one of the, one of the citizens asked for a public record request. And at first, the city didn't want to divulge it, obviously, because it was going to be embarrassing, but, and so the, the council person did try to get a stay of, of that, but eventually the city had to release it and they were talking negatively about their fellow council people and it was really quite embarrassing. But not as embarrassing as the council person who was texting his girlfriend during the council meeting and not his wife. And that was the, probably the most embarrassing of all. And when that became a public record, it was pretty lurid information, which was read into the public record for every council meeting for about three months because they, public thought it was hilarious. So those are some of the things that you might want to think about. Don't be doing that during, and it was even, it was a city-issued phone, but even so, you know, it doesn't look right if you're, people are wondering what you're doing if you're up there on the dais and you're, you know, texting or, or doing whatever. And you might lose your legislative immunity. So that's really nice to have that immunity. You don't want to do things that might, you know, potentially create some problem for you. So with that, those are the areas that our councils have in the, you know, we've had claims in, in all of those areas. I don't have to make these things up because they really happen. And so I'd encourage you to, you know, give some thought to that. If you have further training that you'd like in any of those areas, just let us know. We'll be happy to send out an attorney to, to speak with you and, and give you further training on those. Okay?
Questions? We can ask questions?
Absolutely. Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you. So I've had incidences, back to this email one, where somebody who's trying to get my attention but also knows me personally will send me a city email to both my personal and city address. I'll respond to it through the city address and if I do respond through the personal one, I just say, "I'll be sending it back from my other email address." But because it shows up in the record, does that mean everything on my computer is discoverable because somebody else, even if I didn't use it for city business, does it make it discoverable because they?
Yeah, that's a very good question and we get that a lot. And I think, you know, I can't, I can't guarantee, but if we can show that anytime you inadvertently get an email to your personal, you're not sending things from your personal, but you're get, you're just answering, you know?
It's getting copied there. I don't want it to get copied there.
And if you, if you, you know, probably a better idea, if they're sending it to both and you answer it from your city email and you just let them know, "Don't send things to, please do not send things." You will not get a response from me and from my personal.
Yeah, I'd do that. Okay.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I think you'd be fine.
Councilmember Cher.
Thank you. Does the WCIA have any position with respect to phones? Because I know there's a, a member from another jurisdiction who was telling me about getting separate phones for council members in their city because they were concerned about having conversations relating to city business on their personal phone and whether the records from their phone would then be subject to disclosure in terms of who all they called, you know, from that phone number. Not necessarily for any lurid reasons, but just, you know, not having that information out there. So is, is there any sort of official position on that? Is it city by city? Is there even, is there even a problem or is that just over concern?
That's a very good question. And it depends on what you're doing on your phone. If you're, if you're having voicemails left on your phone, that's a public record, potentially, so that could be a problem. We haven't had that claim yet. We haven't had that public disclosure request yet. So, but it's a possibility. If you're sending email from your phone, because, you know, smartphones, you can certainly, it's just a little computer. So in that regard, it could be a problem. I wouldn't, I wouldn't send emails from your personal, anything, frankly. And, but, you know, talking on the phone at this point, if you're just talking on the phone, I'm, I don't know, frankly, and maybe Wayne knows whether or not they could get your, your personal e-
Well, actually, that issue is currently in litigation involving the Pierce County prosecutor who used his, I don't know if it was his personal phone or, I guess it was his personal phone to make certain phone calls involving county business. And they are trying to get his phone records to verify whether or not he called somebody. I think somehow the issue is, you know, did you talk to this person and when?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it's good advice. I mean, technically, you know, every, anything to do with the city should be done through not your personal devices. That's probably not practical, but if you don't make a practice of it, then, you know.
Just have a follow-up then, based, based on that, which is, so, for instance, we have not only our, our Outlook application for email, but there's also a web-based email access alternative. And is there a distinction drawn in terms of the device that gets used if you're merely accessing the email from the web? Because that, in theory, could be accessed from any computer anywhere, as long as you go to the right, you know, HTTP.
My understanding is that I'm going to, I'm going to ask your, your city clerk because they are, you're most likely your public records officer, but my understanding is, it's not what you're accessing it from. If you're saving it, if it's a web-based email system, you're, you're accessing your city email and it's saving it to the city server. And I think that's probably how it's, you guys are doing it. Yeah. In that case, then you're fine. It's where you're saving it to, yeah.
Councilmember Marts.
Two questions. First, just to follow up on the phones, I'm, I'm a little confused. How should city staff get ahold of us if they need to speak to us verbally if we're not to be using our personal cellphones?
As I said, it's probably impractical for the city to, well, if the city issued a phone to be used for city business, that's how the staff would call that number. But it's not practical in most cases, so the staff's going to call you on your personal phone. And if it becomes an issue as to, you know, whether you got a phone call from the staff, then it's conceivable that the records of, of your personal phone company showing a, you know, a certain call at a certain time on your, on your phone might be discoverable. That doesn't mean everything. It does not mean just because it's tainted that everything on your phone or everything on your computer is going to be discoverable. That's not the case. But, you know, as was pointed out, it's just sort of the, the hassle of having to have somebody go through your phone, either me or, you know, somebody, to verify that that's, you know, that that information is there and that it's the only information. So, you know, use your, use your phone. Just don't, it's mostly email that we're talking about. Phone records very rarely, I mean, who you called and when, very rarely is an issue. I mean, I'm not saying it couldn't be, but it's mostly emails. You leave that, you know, electronic evidence of, of what you're saying. The phone, you don't, obviously.
All right. Thank you. And the second part of my question has to do with social media. If one scrupulously avoids putting city business on one's Facebook page, have there been any problems with, with the use, elected officials or city, city officials' use of social media?
I liked the fact that you said you scrupulously avoid city business on your Facebook page because, again, then you're opening up your whole social media to a public record. But no, I mean, know with the caveat that you're, you're a public official and, and people are interested in what you're doing and, you know, you're reflecting the city of Issaquah. But from our perspective, unless you are, unless you are talking about a citizen derogatorily and you might end up, you know, with some suit because you're, my brain just went dead. But, but, you know, unless you're, unless you're sued for slander or libel, we don't have a problem with that. Employees sometimes can veer into questionable behavior and I think with an elected, it's more if you do that, then you probably aren't going to get re-elected, but, or if you violate some ethical code that you have through the city. But, yeah, I would just stay away from doing, you know, business. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Cher.
Along those same lines, I use Facebook and one of the people I follow is US Senator Patty Murray, happens to be an elected, who often posts information, comments, perspectives on what seem to me to be issues. It'd be very helpful and I just read those with interest. I'm, I'm too frightened, actually, to mention any city business on, on, on social media, so I don't. But there's others that I know that do and it, it always seems to be done very well. It seems, and I don't think they get themselves in trouble, but it would really benefit me if, if I could get more, some, an expert's kind of assessment of how someone like Senator Murray, you know, uses Facebook, for example. Like why this works, why, why, or maybe how that might be a mistake. It'd just have, it'd be really good to have more insight into someone who knows.
Senator Murray is not subject to the state open meeting law or state record.
So we have certain state representatives that do the same, same, I mean, I could point you to some, I'd just be very curious to get an opinion about their use of that, about what's allowed and what's not.
The legislature in their wisdom has exempted themselves from the open public meeting law.
Is there someone else?
So your answer is-
Nobody I know.
...the state legislator.
They, they have?
The state legislature is not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act and I'm not sure that they're subject to the Public Records Act. I'm not sure about that.
No, I don't think they are.
Perhaps there's a higher power.
That's why the legislature can meet in closed session and discuss business and kick people out and they're not violating any law.
You just answered a lot of questions. I had one. Thank you.
Councilmember Cher.
Thank you, Mayor. So, piggybacking on, on the last two comments, I guess it, it jogged my memory regarding OPMA, so, and specifically something like Facebook as, as a platform. You know, I, I also scrupulously avoid talking about city business, but, and, and, you know, if I use the word Issaquah in something, I think there is a way you can exclude certain individuals from seeing or, you know, commenting in any way on, on that post. And so I guess even if it's close, I think there's still ways in social media you can exclude people. But I guess when it comes to OPMA, you know, even if we have a meeting that's not related to city business, I know there's, over the years, been a lot of concern about not having four people in the same room at the same time just because of the unseemliness. So when you have social media, is there any sort of guidance on whether it constitutes being quote-unquote "in the same place"? If I make a comment about something going on in world affairs or on a state legislative level that has no direct bearing on city business, but there are three other council members who conceivably could view that, do I need to unfriend Tola, I guess, is the question?
It, it becomes la, it becomes very layered when you, you know, start to talk about these things. And I think there's, there's kind of two issues. There's kind of the appearance of fairness, that, that the community can believe that what you're talking about, you're doing in an open session. We had the city of Monroe years ago, and I did use their name because this, it was all over in the paper. Their council used to meet before the council meeting for dinner, the entire council. And it was just what they did. And then they would have the council meeting and they, and boy, did they get business done fast. I mean, it was just like bam, bam, bam. There was no open, you know, discourse or anything. And it became a problem in the community. Everybody knew that that's what they were doing. So very, for a very long time after that, once they quit doing that, whenever there was, you know, four of them anywhere or, you know, a, a quorum potentially, there were allegations that they were doing business. Now, like the key is, and Wayne can, you know, add to this, but being, I'm not an attorney, but the, the key is if you're doing, doing business, making decisions, but it doesn't help the community's perception if they think you're doing business. So there's, you know, whether or not you're actually violating the, you know, the OPMA, they might think you are. And so that's a problem. There, you very well can be violating it electronically and we've had that claim with the city of Shoreline. And in fact, we didn't cover them either because it was, it was, the council was sued personally and the city didn't defend them either. So, because they were told not to do that, but they did it anyway. So you have to be very careful about that because you actually can create a quorum.
Gosh, I would say, there is a case, well, let me make a couple of comments. First, I think the legislature needs to provide some more guidance in this area and I know AWC has, has worked for that. But until that time, we do have a case involving a school district where the court basically said you could have a virtual meeting through email. And that's why we suggest the reply to all, don't do that or don't have a communication. I also suggest that you could do that through Facebook. It's sort of a same type of thing. If you make a post and, you know, four or three other members- If you make a post and, you know, uh, four or three other members of the council on city business, not on global warming or, you know, some, some other issue, not in, not the city issue, then it's not a open public meeting because it's, you're not meeting about city business. But if you were talking about, you know, plat seven, eight, and nine, uh, and I know you weren't, but, uh, just, just an example of a recent quasi-judicial thing, um, on Facebook, then, and, and three other, uh, members of the council started commenting or liking or disliking or whatever it is.
Right.
And I don't, usually do Facebooks. Then, yes, I would say, um, you're probably having a, an illegal meeting.
Any other questions? Well, Lisa, thank you very, very much for a very enlightening, uh, and informative presentation.
You're welcome, Mayor. My pleasure.
And so I, I, you heard an offer that if there's additional training that, uh, you might be interested in, let, let me or Bob know and we can arrange that. We value very, very much our close working relationship, uh, between the city of Issaquah and our insurance company.
As do we. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, our next, uh, item of business is for the good of the order. Does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening? Yes. Councilmember Cher.
Just briefly, I, I forgot to mention at the last council meeting, but, uh, on April 30th, the Bellevue College Foundation had its annual become exceptional luncheon and we had Representative Cyrus Habib and Chef John Howey were speakers, uh, at the luncheon. And, um, we heard a lot about the great things, uh, that are going on at the college and a lot of personal stories, uh, as well, which were very inspirational to hear. And particularly of note for Issaquah, the future East Campus was mentioned, uh, by Dr. David Rule, the president of the college, and, uh, was definitely given some airtime. Uh, and so there was a lot of excitement, uh, about the future plans for the college's development in our community. So, I just wanted to convey, uh, it was a well-attended event, about over 750 people at Maidenbauer and, um, tens of thousands of dollars were raised for programs and students.
Thank you for that report. Anything else for good of the order? Seeing none then, we are adjourned at 9:11.